All right. Good evening, everybody.
I didn't hear anything.
Hi, Jean. We're getting started now.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you and welcome to Town of Bowling Green's monthly council meeting. This is Thursday, September 7th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a call, but I have one council person that is on the phone, and Jean Davis and Dan Webb is not here tonight. He's not feeling good. So before we proceed, I will get everybody to stand up and please follow me in the page of allegiance, please. All right. With Jean being on the phone, we need to invite her in on our meeting electronically. So I need a motion made to allow her to participate.
Sub move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. I got a motion by Jeff. I got seconded by Arthur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none. Okay. Motion carries. Welcome, Jean. We will try to remember. We will try to remember that you're there. If not, holler at us, please.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. First thing up is public comments, since we don't have anything else ahead of that.
Let Mr. Mayor amend this to the agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jeff, for reminding me. I was just talking to him. We need to do an amendment to the agenda.
Let me pull up this note here. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to add two new business items. The first one to be the authorization to hire part-time contracted assistants to reduce the backlog of data entry in the finance office. And the second item to be to authorize the interim town manager to retain outside assistance to coordinate preparation of documented internal accounting processes.
Second.
I got first by Jeff. Got seconded by, was that Arthur? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So we'll make that 13B, if that's okay with everybody. All right. Moving on to public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to speak to or relay any messages to town council at this time? Please do come up to the podium, name and address, and I'll give you three minutes. Yeah, I don't see anybody, so we'll hand it over to...
I think I might have to turn that.
This is Dorothy Latney. Is that correct? No? Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. My own.
Do I need to press this?
No, it's already on.
Okay. How's it? Cool. All right. So I had put in a request to see if we could get not necessarily more handicap parking, but to move a handicap parking space down to the other end of Main Street. Both parking spaces, one is out here on the corner of Courthouse and Main Street, and the other one is just up a couple inches from that on the other side of the street. So if somebody is not necessarily in a wheelchair or a scooter or something, it's a long way to walk to get to the other end, you know, if you want ice cream, if you want to go to the insurance, whatever. So we had put in a request. Deborah Lately has been corresponding with... Are you Trish? Trish? And asking if that can be looked at and to see if something could be changed. Because there's really no parking, handicap parking at that end. I know at one of your council meetings, somebody said that we could put it over by the furniture store and then walk through the back and come around. And it's just too far to walk. And it's not just me. I met a man one afternoon when I was getting ice cream, when the ice cream shop was on the other corner on Milford. And he had a heart condition. And they had parked way down. And he was pretty much wore out by the time he got to the picnic tables. So I was just thinking if that might be a possibility, not just for the people in Bowling Green, but people passing through as well. So that's why I'm here.
All right. Well, thank you. We will take a look into that for you.
No, she wasn't in today. I work with her at the Disability Research Center.
Okay.
So, huh? Paula Shaver.
Paula Shaver.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I live down here on the end of Courthouse Lane, 183.
Okay. We have some late people coming in. We're still in public comment. Did you all want to participate in public comment? You do? Okay. Come on up and state your name and address and... Address council. Hey.
My name is Mildred Tufel. I live over at the Hill Mobile Home Park, next to AP Hill. And I took... It's a dump. The new owners, they... The filtration system, the sewer system, has not worked since April. And the smell, sometimes just getting out my car would just nearly knock me down. Did file a complaint with the health department. They... She came out and they found they were... Was an eagle. And what else to do? The management company, they do nothing at all about nothing. I don't know who else to contact to try to get this stuff fixed, the road and everything else. Wanted to be... Okay, good. Okay. Thank you.
Now, thank you. They're not in our jurisdiction.
Oh, really?
They are in the county.
On the county?
Yes, ma'am. So you would have to find your county representative, which is... I'll give you his name.
Yeah.
Jeff Seeley.
Oh, yes.
And then speak at council about it, especially if you've got problems. I know they came to us about joining in our sewer. And right now, we just can't facilitate that with the problems that we're having. Not saying down the road, things could fix, but right now, we just can't.
Okay.
So, you know, that's... You handling with the health department, I think, was probably one of the big things. Because if they found violations, then they should be getting on to the new owners about that.
Yeah, because I have to unhook my cleanout. So whatever's coming from the trailer park has to run under my home, run out into the back, under my home, into the back there, into the woods.
Right.
And that just don't make sense.
Okay.
To go through that stuff like this.
I'm sorry for you on that.
Thank you.
I really am. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on public comments?
Yes, mayor.
Good deal. Come on, Bonnie. I'm doing... I'm doing... Well, when I see you coming, I know you're coming in there for this. So that's a good thing.
Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to ask a question. I see you have new folks here tonight. I would like to hear a lengthy introduction of that experience.
Thank you for reminding me.
I would love to know more about you.
Because I meant to do that.
Because you have a busy schedule.
Yes. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in public comments, please? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close public comments. Thank you for reminding me, Bonnie, about that, because I meant to do that. We do have a new interim town manager, and we do have a new attorney. The interim town manager is named John Anzavino. I'm going... I'll get it straight when I say it a few more times. And then we have a new town attorney, Jeff Gore. So I do like to welcome them here. And so far, I'm hearing really good stuff out of them as far as how the town is looking, what can be done to help fix it. Both of them are really stepping in with both feet and are really doing good. So we do like to welcome them. All right. Moving on to member comments. Do we have any member comments? I know Jeff does. That's...
You know Jeff does.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right. All right. I had two... Well, several conversations over the last few weeks, but I had two requests to bring up here tonight. I'll be pretty quick. The first one was related to when they were doing some extra pump outs of the sewer pumps. There were a lot of those balls that formed from when people are flushing the flushable wipes that really aren't flushable. So I was just kind of asked like, hey, you know, stayed like, we need to do something about that. And like, there's only so much we can do, but we can put out a reminder publicly that that doesn't work well with the systems. And then secondly, and this person's already aware that nothing's really going to be able to happen for tomorrow's Music on the Green. But it was brought up to me that I got complaints of smoking on the property there at the Music on the Green. Obviously, there's nothing inherently wrong with that. But it was brought up in that we could have a discussion about smoking on that property. I told the fellow that that property is county, but then also under jurisdiction of the judge. So it's not something that we have direct control over, per se. But for next year, when we get around to it, we can talk about it, maybe petition the judge at that point. But I told him that I would say something. So that was that. Lastly, well, second to lastly, because, you know, I have to... We all have to welcome, you know, our new staff. It's great. Look forward to you. But you mentioned a minute ago about, you know, where number one was placed on a public comment and that being a little bit strange. We do have a piece of paper here regarding the parking that even has, you know, stuff like a suggestion motion and whatnot. So let's probably have anybody else that has some comment. But let's go back to that before we move forward. And I'm done for now.
Anybody else?
Yes. Mark, I would like to thank John for what he has done. I think he's done an exceptional job, and I would like to publicly say thank you.
Thank you, Jean. We heard that. Thank you very much.
Ditto from everyone. I'd like to thank and welcome John to our first meeting. Mr. Anzavino and Mr. Gore, thank you for being here. Ms. Davis and I actually attended the redesignation of Fort Walker last week. It was really an amazing function. And Commander Duffy would really love to coordinate with the town, just being a part of the community. They want to be involved in Harvest Festival. But it's really interesting how the process went through. But we now have a change of designation, if nobody was aware of that, Fort Walker in lieu of AP Hill.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be the first time I ever had a comment, because I don't typically do that. But I just want to say, welcome to Mr. Gore and welcome to Mr. Anzavino, and thank council for the leadership that it took to move forward with these two. Of course, Mr. Anzavino is a consultant with the Berkeley Group, Bonnie. And so he's on an interim basis. But I want to tell you, I got my packet from the chief a couple nights ago, and it was absolutely refreshing to get a packet as thorough, one that I have not seen this year. And I so look forward. And hearing your report tonight during the work session, very refreshing. The level of confidence I have in your knowledge and your grasp, just the nine days of what our issues are here, is... Makes me sleep better. And I look forward to you helping us moving this ball forward. And I look forward, Mr. Gore, very impressed, you know, with your interview. And I look forward to you, and I appreciate you working with us and understanding our small town. And I look forward to working with you. So great job, council, on picking two wonderful, wonderful candidates to move us forward. Thank you.
And thank you, David, for helping get Mr. Gore.
Anybody else? All right. Moving out of public members' comment. And Jeff, to your question down there about suggestion motions for the town council, I think this is something that town manager... Town manager has the authority to designate parking on his own. So, I mean, that's something that he should look into. And I'm not to say that when the ice cream place opened up, that their guidelines was followed correctly as far as providing adequate parking for their location. So it's done now put a burden on the town, you know, because they fenced everything off. So I'm just saying, there's a couple of issues. But it's up to the town manager, so we should leave it up to him to...
Well, this paper is from the town manager.
I understand that.
I was just saying, I didn't want to pass by it without addressing it.
I understand. I'm not trying to pass by addressing. I'm just saying, he's already got the authority to look into the matter and to make a decision, get with VDOT, and see what can be done and, you know. So if you want to move it on to him, then we can do so. Like I said, he's already got the authority from council to do such. Anybody else?
Well, I'll make a motion to move that the town manager be tasked with preparing a report for council review and possible search studies, et cetera, which is listed on here as Mr. Anzavino has so noted.
I second.
Got it first by Val. We got seconded by who? Who's seconded?
Mr. Stork.
David? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Jean, okay. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. I will move on to staff reports. Public Works Department? Any questions or anything? Any comments?
Might add, Mayor, on Public Works that most of the report for utilities, which is typically part of Public Works, has already been given.
Police report. Chief had to leave. He wasn't feeling too good. And if anybody has any questions or concerns on that, please get with him when he gets back, either tomorrow. Town Treasurer Finance Report? Anything on that? Or is that going to be part of what you just gave in earlier?
That's pretty much been discussed, sir.
Town Administration, do you have anything new to add?
I just want to add, Mayor, there's a couple handouts that Trish provided you. One is you'd taken an action at a previous council meeting about creation of committees. And so I penned some thoughts for you about committees and how they might be structured here, what they're... How they might work, what the benefits, what the disadvantages of committees are, and how they... How you may need maybe four committees here. And I just offer that for your thought. That's not for action this evening, but I thought I would prime the pump a little bit so that you all could... If you want to move in that direction, that's fine. I've worked with committees in the past, and I've worked with governing bodies that served as committee of the whole. It's dependent upon what you want to do. And I think you all want to have a more thorough discussion about that before you form the committees and really head down that path. But just for your thoughts. The second thing is, and you mentioned the magic month of December. I'm a short-termer. You know, I was in local government as a manager for 25 years. I was in the consulting world for 16. I worked in a governor's office for three. So I've got, you know, some mileage on myself. And I've retired two or three times. I do this because I enjoy working with local governments. I'm here in Bowling Green because I used to live here and was the county administrator here. And unfortunately, had to visit Mr. Stork's funeral home for a funeral just about two weeks before you called and saw how nice the community had remained and actually improved. Downtown is more vibrant than when I was here before. But I'm not here forever. I know you've had discussions about recruitment and selection of a new town manager. But what I've provided you is kind of a handout of how the process should work. I did executive recruitment for the public sector, ranging from the Commonwealth of Virginia, the city of Louisville, Kentucky, to the town of Exmoor, Virginia, over on the eastern shore. This is a process that our company used with the timelines that we used. I've looked at the pool of applicants that you have, that I have in our shared folder. And I would urge you to, you know, take a little bit deeper dive, but get the process moving forward. Because I don't want to leave you in a position in December where you say, well, gee, why don't you stay on? Because my terms are typically four months at the maximum. That's all my wife will allow me to do. Okay? I'll help transition a new town manager in. I'll provide any assistance I can. But I really would like to, you know, be able to say I'm not going to be driving up 17 and 301 after December 1st. So just an outline for you all to consider, and however you wish to address that information is fine. I will let you know one other thing that's... And I probably have really provided you most of the information in my manager's report, by those weekly reports. Next Tuesday, there'll be a food bank delivery over here from the Fredericksburg Food Bank over by the recreational lot, the park. And that's being coordinated through the Caroline Sheriff's Department. So I just wanted to let you all know, in case you come by and you see a bunch of people around here, that's going to be going on. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about anything that comes up, as you know.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to consent agendas. Are we in a position to accept a consent agenda six through 10 as they are? If so, can I get a motion?
Sub move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have a motion on the floor from Jeff to accept six through 10 consent agendas.
I'll second that.
Got a seconded by Randy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I should have asked for discussion. Thank you, Jean. All right. Unfinished business. Item number 11, tobacco tax implementation. Next step. Town manager, you got it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your package is a report with some background, steps to be taken, benefits in adopting a tax, some of the challenges, and a recommendation. Tobacco tax is fairly common for municipalities in Virginia. When I was in at the town manager up in Warrenton, we adopted it back in 1990-something. I know the town of Urbana, where I live now, just recently adopted one. But it's a tax which has some benefit. It's a pretty non-invasive tax for municipality. And examples of counties and towns that have tobacco taxes, you know, Warrenton and Falkir, Schenckatig and Acamac, Urbana, Middlesex, all the towns up in Loudoun County. And I've served as an interim manager up there as well. Blacksburg, the town of Blacksburg in Montgomery County, and there are others. So it's not a foreign concept for a county, because Caroline County does have a tobacco tax, which was recently implemented. And they do collect it in the town of Bowling Green. If you adopt a tobacco tax, those funds that are being collected by the county now in the town of Bowling Green would be the town's, and they would be extracted from what the county is collecting. I've talked to Alan Parton over at the county, and he was going to talk to the county administrator, who's going to talk to the board supervisors to see if there was any concern about that, the town of Bowling Green implementing such a tax because they're already collecting it. But I also understand that they kind of expect the town to adopt one sooner or later, anyway. The process for adopting a cigarette tax and potential revenues, we're looking at, you know, around... According to estimates that we received from the Chesapeake Bay Cigarette Tax Board, about, you know, $3,000 to $5,000 a month, which is, you know, substantial for the town of Bowling Green. There are ways to collect it. There are cigarette tax boards, regional boards. There are four in the state. The closest one to us is a new board. It's the Chesapeake Bay Cigarette Tax Board, located over in Montross. It's in the... Housed in the office of the Northern Neck Planning District Commission. And typically, they handle all of the administration of the tax where you're working with the State Department of Taxation. The State Department of Taxation provides them the collected taxes. They disperse it to their communities that are members. You don't have to worry about the stamps. You don't have to worry about administration. Now, Caroline is one of the number of counties in the state, maybe four or so, that have chosen to administer it on their own. And it doesn't seem to be a major burden on the commission of the revenue. But at the same time, if we were to collect one, that would be another added responsibility for staff. And we do have limited number of staff. So if you wish to pursue this, I would urge you to consider joining a cigarette tax board. Most likely, the Chesapeake Cigarette Tax Board. You've got copies of information concerning the tax in your package. And I've spoken to the town attorney. This is a process. It's going to take a couple of months to get this together. It's going to take a couple of months for it to be implemented and for it to begin collection and dispersal to the town. So we provided you three options there for consideration. But you may set a target for adoption, maybe January 1st or so. Give you plenty of time, and plenty of time for the town to work with the county and make sure that it's not something which is obtrusive.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the town council in Bowling Green direct the town attorney to develop draft ordinance to move forward with this. Maybe not, but start on it and maybe implement it after the first of the year to get past our hump of our staffing issues. But I think it's something that, whatever the amount is, $3,000 to $5,000 is not a small issue for the town. It would be very helpful at this time. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that. Can I add to that motion? Can we also add that we be... An agreement be done so that we can be included in Chesapeake Bay Board?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, if you want me to briefly touch on that. So Mr. Anzavino has explained it well. You know, there is an advantage, I think, of joining one of these regional entities that does this. They administer the enforcement, the collection, all of that. Take a small percentage of the collection to cover their admin fees. But the legal process will be to prepare an ordinance that does two things. It both implements the tax in the town and also would have the town approve the regional agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Cigarette Tax Board. And so that's done through the Joint Powers Act in the state code, which requires any member locality that joins in one of those regional acts to do anything that one can do, you all can do together. But to do that, you have to adopt an ordinance. So the ordinance would do two things, unless we break it up into two. But so we'll require an ordinance. What I can do, if it's council's direction, is prepare that, have it in the next agenda for you all to look at, comment on, provide feedback, and, you know, have it teed up for advertisement and adoption later in the year so that it could take effect in January.
All right. So the motion would be what you were saying? Or would your motion still carry?
I think the motion was fine as amended, simply to direct town attorney to prepare the ordinance that would implement the tax and, as amended, to join the Chesapeake Bay...
That's my motion.
All right. So I got a motion by Mr. Stork, and I got a seconded by Val Recol.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. All important discussions?
Yeah. I think that we'd probably go down that road. I'd be a little bit concerned about a motion that would, you know, be mandating that we join that board, though. I kind of would, like, I've talked to a few county personnel that, yeah, they said the same idea of it. It's fairly simple to manage oneself. Now, I don't, you know, like, you know, town manager said that would definitely be a different animal here entirely, but, yeah, I still like to explore it, because I don't even know what the, I know it was stated when we brought it up before, but I'm not remembering off the top of my head what the percentage was that these boards would charge, but I think that, you know, could very well play a factor.
Jeff, in your experience, if we were to move forward with the limited staff we have now to join this Chesapeake Bay group, could we pull out of it at some point if we got staffed up and really wanted to do it ourselves?
I think you could, but also, to your point, I don't think, this is not binding council to any decisions. I think it's just asking staff to prepare something. So you'd have plenty of time to consider whether and how to move forward. I can just prepare the documents, and you all can decide, you know, later, get more information, decide later whether you want to go solo, join the regional group, or not do it at all. So that's, you're not making that decision tonight.
In regards to your concerns, Jeff, I understand the going solo. I know the county is. We are a small area. By joining the board, they will take care of all the law enforcement. They will make sure that the stamps and everything is in compliance. For us to have to do all of that will be a large amount of additional staff work. Don't remember what the percentages, I actually was on their quarterly meeting this morning with Jerry Davis, but it's just, it makes it easier for a town of our size to become a member so that they can do all the implementation, all of the law enforcement and the compliance, because they will do the compliance checks every month. If someone is not selling with a stamp, that is the Bowling Green stamp, we need to make sure, and I don't know if anyone here is going to run around to seven different stores to make sure they're all compliant, but just a thought to put in the back of your head.
No, that sounds good to me. I was just concerned about making a decision tonight, that's all.
Now, how does, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Valerie, it'd be somewhere based on the facts that are here, around $3,000 annually. If it was $60,000 of income coming in at 5%, would be the administration fee, I believe.
I'm not, I don't remember. Mr. Anzavino, what was the...
5%.
5%.
5%. So if it was 60 annually, we're looking at roughly 3.
Yeah, which still isn't bad.
Now, is there an initial upfront cost to purchase the stamps that are, that will need to be done, or nothing like that?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? We'll do a roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Ayes have it. All right, so the attorney will draw up something for us to look at later. Moving on to item 12, GWRC Hazard Migration Plan. Do we have somebody here on that, or is that the town manager speaking on it?
I'll make the introduction, and Meredith Hepple is here from the PDC, should you have any questions. There is a memorandum in your packet. I would have given you the whole plan, but it's 432 pages. I didn't think you'd want to read it. It is a plan which is required by FEMA, and it qualifies the town for disaster aid, and really is a requirement for disaster aid, should there be a FEMA-related disaster here in the community. This is updated annually. We are the last community in the Planning District Commission to be considering this, and all others have adopted it. But Meredith, you might want to highlight the council on what's in the plan and how it works for the town.
So I think Meredith Hepple, I'm the environmental planner. I was not involved in writing it, but we did work with a consultant who was able, oh, that sounds better. We worked with a consultant who was able to put together this behavioral plan, one of the main steps to identifying... Nope, that one. That better? There we go. Okay.
Meredith.
Yes.
Come over here.
All righty. Let's see if we can do this a little bit. Okay, so the plan, the primary purpose of the plan was to identify hazards that might exist within the region. So we're looking at the Planning District, which stretches from Stafford down to Caroline County, and then across from Spalsylvania to King George. So we were looking at 10 primary types of hazard mitigation activities. So this is looking at how we can prevent disasters from happening. That was everything from Dan and Levy failures, so looking, or Levy failures, so looking at high-hazard dams, to looking at flood events. We did a pretty robust public engagement process, reached out, had a survey. We worked with the Berkeley Group, wrote this 435-page plan that complies with what FEMA requires, and that ended up with this plan that helps us be able to access that pre- and post-disaster funding from FEMA. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but again, it is a very long document, and I might have to refer you to give me a moment to come up with an answer.
So this is a preventive thing, but what happens if we have a natural disaster? Does that help cover us to get FEMA funds in?
Yes, so this would be part of what you use to talk to FEMA, to say, "Hey, I've already done the mitigation strategies for a natural disaster," so that whether that's a warning system, right, saying that, you know, our police department and our fire department have a warning system should there be a flash flood or something like that. And FEMA says, "Oh, okay, so you already put in the legwork to make sure that if there was a disaster, people would be less likely to have their homes or themselves damaged." So then FEMA's more likely to give you money.
On that topic right there, would there be any financial responsibilities on behalf of the town to meet the requirements or recommendations in the extensive plan?
No, so it does have recommendations at the end of the plan, however, we are not on the hook for them, we'll say. We do a five-year cycle to update it, so we're looking at our funding cycles to start it yet all over again. Seems like just yesterday we were finishing up this plan, but we'll be looking at a funding cycle again soon, and that will start the process all over to rewrite the plan, and often, items carry over.
Understood, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion.
All right, sir.
I'll move that the Bowling Green Town Council adopt a resolution adopting the 2023 Hazard Mitigation Plan update as developed and presented by the George Washington Regional Commission.
And I'll second that. Okay, I guess first by Arthur, second by Randy. Any other discussions on it? Okay, y'all have the resolution in front of you. We'll do a roll call. Gene?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Aye.
Motion carries. The resolution number 2023 has been adopted. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate that. Now, we're down to item 13, goodwill drop-off site referral to Planning Commission interim from the interim town manager.
Last item on the agenda for me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is kind of a transitional item between your former manager and myself, and it's kind of fell through the cracks a little bit. The goodwill folks have rented a store space here in the shopping center. There was a determination made that it's not an eligible use under the zoning ordinance, and a text amendment is required. Consequently, it behooves us to, as you as a council, excuse me, not us, you as a council, to refer this to the Planning Commission for review and amendment to the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the council for adoption of changes to the zoning ordinance. That's the way it typically works. That's the way it works under the state code. So what we are recommending here is that you pass a motion, as stated in the package, referring this to the Planning Commission. And because this has been an outstanding issue, that we have a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission when they have completed their work, to kind of speed the process up, because goodwill is paying rent right now on that space. And they've been very patient with us in the transition, but we do need to move this forward. They paid all their fees, and they're ready to go when we're ready to go. They have had a presence in the town for a number of years, where they've had temporary collections, but they have gone to the concept now of having what they call a receipt center. That's what this will be. It will not be selling any goods whatsoever. They just receive goods here, they get sorted, then they get shipped out to other stores for sale. There is, this happens over in Colonial Beach, it happens in a number of different communities, which we've given you examples of, and I believe that they would be good neighbors to the community. So happy to answer any questions.
So they used to have a tractor trailer that sat over at the Food Line Shopping Center where people would drop off stuff, so this is like that, but a storefront?
Yes.
And do you concur that it does not meet our current zoning?
I would say so. In that particular district, there's nothing there for this type of receipt of goods on a continuous basis.
So there's no sales there? It's just you take stuff there and donate?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If they had retail there, it would probably meet it.
So the, what David said, I was going to bring up too, so what would be the difference between the tractor trailer sitting there and the storefront? Was the tractor and trailer, when goodwill was doing it then, that was in violation?
It was a temporary use of the property, and I'm not sure how the town ruled on it at that time.
Yeah, but it's the same thing with this one.
It's governed by the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it's the same thing with this, so, all right. I was just wondering on that myself. It's just, what would be the difference?
So they're going to have a building to bring things into, plus a standalone box outside for after-hours?
A very small box, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, sir.
Okay, I move that goodwill industry's request for amendments to the town's zoning ordinance, along for the drop-off donation site and clothing and related material, to be referred to the Planning Commission for study and appropriate zoning ordinances. Amendment entered the joint public hearing between the council and Planning Commission. Be scheduled upon the Planning Commission's completed review and at the earliest possible time.
Second. Okay, I got a second by Jeff, first by Randy, second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none? All right, motion carries. Now, we're down to 13B. We have two items there. One is giving the town manager a position to contact a temp hiring agency, and another one is giving him permission to use his better judgment to seek CPA financial firm to help get us out.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion if we...
All right, go ahead, sir.
Okay, all right. I move to authorize hiring part-time contracted assistants to reduce the backlog of data entry.
Second.
All right, we got a first by Jeff, we got a second by Arthur. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, roll into the second one then. Okay, let's, I'll move to authorize the interim town manager to retain outside assistance to coordinate preparation of documenting internal accounting processes for internal staff use.
All right, seconded.
All right, we got a first by Jeff, second by Randy. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Gene. All right, motion carries. 13B is done. Now, we're down to informational items. Number 14, registration is open October 17, 2023. Regional, Fredericksburg Expo Conference Center Regional Housing Assembly. I guess you all have read up on this?
Yeah.
I don't know a lot about it. Do you know anything about it over there? John?
As, I think as the governing body knows, that there's a real focus on affordable housing these days in the Commonwealth, and it's, this has been a decades-old issue. It was, you know, it was an issue when I was in local government, and, but the Planning District Commission is in the process of bringing folks together, offering, to offer ideas, have discussions, and to gain information about this. This is, we provided it to the council for informational purposes. We'll also provide it to the Planning Commission for informational purposes as well, but we just wanted you to be aware of it, because affordable housing is an issue everywhere. And, you know, there are some undeveloped parcels of property here in town that, you know, may be a good location for affordable housing, just throwing out an idea. But the fact of the matter is, just wanted you to be aware of it.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I don't see any other items on here.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
And who made it? Arthur? Arthur made the motion. Randy seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Gene, thank you for attending. Hope you're feeling better.
I've done a lot of medicine, so I'll either get well or die.
Well, please don't do the latter, okay? Get better. All right, have a good week.
Aye.